Welcome to the Montgomery County Commission meeting for Tuesday, December 22. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here. County Engineer? Is he still here?
Just a moment, Commissioner.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I had all the resolutions and not the agenda. So, yes, Commissioners, good afternoon. We have a number of resolution for approval today. The first is Resolution 20-1619 to authorize a cost sharing agreement with the City of Franklin Cincinnati Pike retaining wall feasibility study located on the west side of Dayton Cincinnati Pike in Miami Township and the City of Franklin. 1620 is to set the date of January 19, 2021, for the viewing and January 26, 2021, for the hearing on the Peters Pike and Lower Miami's Burke Road Coford Replacement Project in Butler and Miami Townships. 1621 is to authorize a closing of Philadelphia Drive between State Rock 48 and Marquee Road, lasting for approximately two weeks for a water line relocation. 1622 is to advertise for the Whip Road Bridge Replacement Project in Washington Township at an estimated cost of $400,000. 1623 is to approve and accept temporary construction easements for road right-of-way purposes from the Washington Township Park District and the City of Centerville School District for the Whip Road Bridge Replacement Project in Washington Township and to record the same. Thank you.
I move for approval. Second, all those in favor. County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1624, authorizing a payment by warrant to Miami Valley Crime Stoppers, Inc., in the amount of $5,329.26. We also have Resolution 1625, authorize an agreement with the Dayton Municipal Court for bail services in Montgomery County Jail in an amount not to exceed $428,414 through December 31, 2022.
I move for approval.
I second. All those in favor? Aye. Juvenile Court?
Under Juvenile Court Commissioners, we have Resolution 1626, authorizing an agreement with K-12 Gallery for young people to provide enhanced educational services to juveniles involved with the juvenile court schools in an amount not to exceed $80,000 through December 31, 2021.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor? Aye. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator Commissioners, first, I would like to enter into record the BCC Financial Report for November 2020. Also, under the Clerk's Office, we have approval of the minutes of the meeting on December 15, 2020. Resolution 1627, approval of bills. That list is available in the Clerk's Office.
I move for approval.
I second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Administrative Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have Resolution 1628, Approval of Personnel Actions. That list is available in the Clerk's Office. 1629, authorize a payment by warrant to Judy Stormer in the amount of $2,250. 1620, select the bid and authorize an agreement with Becker Construction Incorporated, general contractor for the jail security infrastructure improvement project at their lowest and best bid of $450,000 for the base bid plus alternate items 1, 2, 3, and 4 through July 30, 2021. 1631, authorize an agreement with the City of Dayton serving as fiscal agent for the Dayton Municipal Court to provide an electronic home detention program for the county municipal courts in an amount not to exceed $300,000 through December 31, 2021. 1632, authorize a lease agreement with the City of Centerville on behalf of the Clerk of Court's Auto Title Division for the leasing of 1,559.7 square feet of space located at 108 West Spring Valley Road for a four-year term through December 31, 2024, with options to renew at an annual rate of $7,018.65 through December 31, 2021. 1633, amend the agreement with Med Impact Healthcare Systems Incorporated to include the Enhanced Fraud Waste and Abuse Program into the scope of work for the administration of the County Pharmacy Benefit Management Program. 1634, extend the price agreement with YMCA of Greater Dayton for biometric screenings in an amount not to exceed $95,000 through December 31, 2021. 1635, authorize the purchase from Electronics for Imaging Incorporated of an EFI Print Smith Vision Print Shop Management Software Solution in an amount not to exceed $13,760. 1636, accept a quick claim deed from the Trotwood Community Improvement Corporation for approximately 3.288 acres of land, more or less located in the city of Trotwood. The following two agreements, or resolutions, I'm sorry, are to authorize consulting agreements with the Butler County Board of County Commissioners for justice web interactions and reports through December 31, 2021. That is 1637, which is the Butler County Area Courts Probation Department, with a revenue not to exceed $5,000. 1638, Butler County Children's Services, with a revenue not to exceed $25,000. The next two resolutions are to authorize lease renewal options through December 31, 2021. 1639, Randolph Investments LLC on behalf of the Clerk of Court's Auto Title Division for the leasing of 1,000 square feet of office space located in the Randolph Plaza Shopping Center in an annual amount of $9,500. 1640, Montgomery County Abstracters Association for the leasing of 544 square feet of office space in the administration building at a rate of $45 per desk per month. And that is all that I have. Thank you.
Commissioners, before you approve, I just want to weigh in on Resolution 1636. This is the quick campaign deed for our future site of our Trotwood Court. This is not going to be just another municipal court. This will also be the hub for the Western Division Court, but it also will be an opportunity center as our plans are to put our workforce investment team and some part of our human services team at this location. This will be a state-of-the-art facility, and this will be almost a $6 million investment in the community. So, thank you Commissioners for your leadership here. Again, the goal is not to just build a court, but to build a hub that the community can enjoy on a whole magnitude of different services. So, thank you Commissioners. Thank you, Jocelyn.
Thank you.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Environmental Services, Matt?
Afternoon Commissioners. I have five items today. One is a late item. Resolution 1641 is to authorize an agreement with the City of Springboro and Daniel J. Common, trustee, to allow the City of Springboro to provide sanitary sewer service to an area within the Sugar Creek Facility planning area. Resolution 1642, amend the agreement for consulting services with GT Environmental, Inc., to extend the date and recertify remaining 2020 funds for use in 2021 in an amount not to exceed $32,428.18 through December 31, 2021. Resolution 1643, amend the connection fee schedule and the ancillary fee schedule through December 31, 2021. Resolution 1644, release 100% of the performance bond and the subdividers' contract with HMA Allure LLC for the Allure. And the late item is Resolution 1681, amend the agreement with Allerman and Judy Construction LLC for the design and construction of the sanitary conveyance and treatment improvements Western Regional Project by adding $2,76,211 to the original amount for the revised total of $6,014,066.
I move for approval.
I second. All those in favor? Aye. Human Services, Tom?
Good afternoon Commissioners. I have a variety of items this afternoon for your consideration. Under Human Services Planning and Development, Resolution 1645 will authorize an agreement with the Area Agency on Aging PSA II for comcare services for eligible seniors 60 years and older in an amount not to exceed $8,797,941.36 through December 31 of 2021. This is the managed care program through the Human Services Levy that operates with comcare in the community. Resolution 1646 will authorize a professional services agreement with Learn to Earn Dayton to provide professional support for the early care and education initiatives in an amount not to exceed $50,000 through December 31 of 2021. Excuse me. Resolution 1647 will authorize an interagency agreement on behalf of the Family Children First Council for the Transition of Early Intervention Services Part C to preschool special education programs and Part B, other appropriate services. 1648 will authorize a delegation of activities agreement with St. Vincent de Paul for emergency shelter services in an amount not to exceed $101,705 of 2020 Emergency Shelter Grant Funds through December 31 of 2021. 1649 will authorize a price agreement with Dayton Children's Hospital, Grandview Hospital, Kettering Medical Center, Miami Valley Hospital, Miami Valley Hospital North, Miami Valley Hospital South, Southview Hospital, and Sycamore Hospital for medical treatment and services to in-aging ill residents in an amount not to exceed $5 million through December 31 of 2021. And this is on behalf of the Human Services Levy as well. 1650 will authorize a contribution of $90,745 to the Joint Office of Citizen Complaints, also known as the Ombudsman, to assist residents with information referral and investigative services concerning government services and operations through December 31 of 2021. We also need to amend an agreement. 1651 is with Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley for Adult Day Services for eligible seniors by amending articles in the agreement in an amount not to exceed $35,814 through June 30, 2021. Continuing, 1652 is with Elizabeth's New Life Center for Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Services Programs by amending articles in the agreement in an amount not to exceed $137,583.43 Ohio Children's Trust Funds through June 30 of 2021. 1653 is with the YWCA of Dayton for Homeless Crisis Response Program Services by amending articles and exercising option one in an amount not to exceed $159,483 through December 31 of 2021. 1654 is with County Corp. to assist with outreach, education, and direct support services for eligible residents by extending the term of the agreement through June 30 of 2021. I have one late item for Human Services Planning and Development. Resolution 1682, amend the agreement with St. Vincent de Paul for improvements to emergencies shelter to mitigate COVID-19 effects for homeless residents by decreasing the amount by $100,000 for revised total not to exceed $7,490,000 of CARES Act funds through December 30 of 2020. I also have actions in the Department of Job and Family Services. 1655 will authorize an agreement to provide eligible referral and support services to the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board with funding in an actual amount of 50%, of expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December 31 of 2021. 1656 will authorize an agreement with Goodwill Easter Seals of Miami Valley to provide Ohio Works First and Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program employment and training services in an amount not to exceed $600,000 through December 31 of 2021. 1657 will authorize a sub-grant agreement with Catholic Social Services for the Miami Valley for supervised visits and exchange services through Irma's House in an amount not to exceed $73,010 through December 31 of 2021. We also have interagency agreements. 1658 with Juvenile Court for the Family Treatment Court Liaison for the Family Treatment Court Program, excuse me, in an amount not to exceed $57,907 through September 30 of 2021. Excuse me. 1659 with the Business Services to provide SEEK Work Opportunity Program Services in an amount not to exceed $130,000 through December 31 of 2021. 1660 with the Prosecutor's Office for the provision of legal services to the Children's Services Division by the Prosecutor's Child Protection Unit through December 31 of 2021. We also need to authorize cooperative agreements to establish cooperative procedures for the effective establishment and enforcement of child support obligation 4D programs through December 31 of 2021. 1661 is with Juvenile Court Clerks Division for Clerk of Court Services in an amount not to exceed $434,548.8. 1662 with Juvenile Court for magistrate services in an amount not to exceed $571,626.8. We also need to authorize options through December 31, 2021, and add Article 35 and/or modify existing services. 1663, Legal Process Servers for Express LLC to provide process servers I'm sorry, process server services for the Child Support Enforcement Agency in an amount not to exceed $60,000. 1664 with United Way of the Greater Dayton Area to provide help like 211 after-hours telephone answering services to the Adult Protective Services Division in an amount not to exceed $6,118. 1665 also with United Way of the Greater Dayton Area to provide help like 211 telephone answering services to the Children's Services Division in an amount not to exceed $2,995. 1666 with children have options in caring environments incorporated to provide reunification services in an amount not to exceed $100,000 and modify the funding source from TANF to Children's Services funding. And we need to authorize options for comprehensive case management employment program services to prevention and retention and contingency eligible families through December 31 of 2020, and add Article 35 and modify existing articles. 1667 is with the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio doing business as Miami Valley Urban League in an amount not to exceed $500,000. And 1668 with Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley in an amount not to exceed $700,000. We also need to authorize options to renew with the Sheriff's Office for Security Services through December 31 of 2021. 1669, the Children's Services Division in an amount not to exceed $279,435. 1670, Child Support Enforcement Agency in an amount not to exceed $136,131. And 1671, the Job Center in an amount not to exceed $136,131. I also have a few late items in the Department of Job and Family Services. 1683 will authorize an agreement to provide eligible referral and support services to the Premier Health Partners with funding in actual amounts of 50% of expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December 31 of 2021. 1684 will authorize a sub-grant agreement with Wright State University for supportive services for the Kinship Navigator Program in an amount not to exceed $90,963.50 through December 31 of 2021. 1685 will authorize an agreement with Dayton Children's Hospital to provide services through CareHouse, a children's advocacy center in an amount not to exceed $200,000 through December 31 of 2021. And finally, 1683 will authorize an agreement with Richard Bromberg, Ph.D., for clinical services in an amount not to exceed $100,000 through December 31 of 2022. And that concludes my items for this afternoon. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, well, I definitely moved to approve, but it's obvious we're at the end of the year and a lot of things to wrap up, since this is our last meeting. So, definitely moved to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, Business Services, Chris?
Thank you Commissioners. Under Business Services, under Community and Economic Development, we have Resolution 1672, authorizing an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with various member jurisdictions to renew and administer the Business First Program for a Greater Dayton Region Business Retention and Expansion Program through December 31, 2025. We have Resolution 1673, accept the recommendations of the Community Development Advisory Committee for proposed Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, project funding for FY 2020. And then Commissioners, we have four late items. Resolution 1687, authorize a small business grant agreement with various local businesses through December 30 of 2020. Resolution 1688, authorizing CARES nonprofit grant agreements with various local organizations through December 30 of 2020. Resolution 1689, authorizing agricultural assistance grant agreements with various local agricultural businesses and individuals through December 30 of 2020. And under Community Economic Development, we have Resolution 1690, authorizing the renewal of a management services and consulting agreement with Dayton History for the operation and programming of Memorial Hall in an amount not to exceed $253,633.55 through December 31, 2021.
I move for approval.
I second. All those in favor? Aye.
And just a thank you to Brady, you know, taking on the responsibility of Old Courthouse and Memorial Hall was big, and so we're appreciative of that every year.
You're absolutely right, Commissioner. He helps us with programming in both areas and gives us the necessary opportunity to do some maintenance and some things that we need to do in the community with both buildings. So, thank you.
Okay. Under County Commissioners, 20-1674, reappoint Doug Compton and Gregory Holler, representing the business community to the Human Services Levy Council through December 31, 2024. 1675, reappoint Deborah Feldman, Doug Compton, Doug McGary, and Eric Schaefer to the Family and Children's First Council through December 31, 2023. 1676, appoint Michael Flannery, Greg Scott, Randy Smith, and Ronette Burks Troisdale to the Reentry Council through December 31, 2024. 1677, reappoint Linda Ashworth, Susan Gottschlick, Jessica Jenkins, Michael Newsom, Bonnie Beeman Rice, Judge Walter Rice, Reverend Arvin Ridley, Joe Spitler, Cheryl Taylor, John Theobald, and John Zimmerman to the Reentry Council through December 31, 2024. Most important one is 1678, elect County Commissioner Judy Dodge to serve as President of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2021. 1679, appoint designate various persons to serve on various boards and committees for a one-year term. 1680, set the dates and times for all regular session meetings of the Montgomery County Board of County Commissioners for the year 2021. That's all. I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Comments by County Administrator, the last meeting of the year?
Yay! 2020 is almost over. First of all, Commissioners, congratulations and thank you for staying on as President for one more year. We will look to you for leadership.
Okay.
And also, congratulations to Paul and Judy. We just had our swearing-in right before this. Judge Rice was kind enough to swear the three of us in virtually. So, that was a new one, but we're looking forward to another four years for everyone. And then I want to point out the reappointments to our Reentry Council. You know, Judge Rice and all the that you named off, you know, they give so much to this effort, to this initiative, and that's why we're so successful in our reentry program. So, we're going to keep doing the good work there, and I'm just thankful to see that everybody agreed to stay on.
Okay.
Well, my turn?
Okay.
Sure. Okay. So, well, congratulations to Paul and Judy and Debbie. I am glad that the voters very wisely re-elected you, and I look forward to another few years that we can work together. And I just appreciate everyone that I serve with and the executive team, and honestly, the thousands of employees that we don't see, but we know are working hard every day. And I know we sometimes sound like we say the same thing over and over, but we can't take any single employee for granted. And as we come to the end of this year, I am just so proud of everyone. I know it's been one heck of a year, not a person untouched by all that's happened. And but it reinforces, you know, why we do what we do because it's in times like this when you really know what your priorities are, and it's our citizens, and I am just so grateful for everyone's flexibility, adaptability, resilience, determination, that no matter what happens, we're going to get through this and fulfill the mission. And I don't take that for granted, and I know none of us do, and I don't take any of you for granted. So, to anyone watching out there, I hope you have wonderful end of the year. I hope you stay well, and that I am so ready, and I think everyone in the world, I think globally, is ready for a 2021 where we bounce back, realigned with what's important to us, caring for one another, knowing we have big problems and issues to solve, but determined that together, we can, even if we don't solve it, move things in a better direction for a better tomorrow for not only us, but our children and grandchildren in our community in general. So, I'm optimistic, and congratulations. I'm so glad you'll we'll all be together on this mission, and thank you to the executive team. You always shine. I've always said the most important thing you can do is to surround yourself with outstanding individuals and just let them loose to use their, you know, abilities, talent, experience, and with this team, we really do that. So, thank you. I am very grateful for all of you, and have a wonderful holiday and a happy new year.
Commissioners, Commissioner Lieberman took my spot, so.
I know she did. I didn't want to say anything.
Jumped on it. You weren't talking, so.
She's excited about that next term.
That's right.
Commissioners, I'd like to say congratulations on your reelection. You're going to do a fine job, and for all three of you, it's amazing for me because.
You're going to do a fine job, and for all three of you, it's amazing for me because for in my thirty year career, I've known you in other roles, and I think clearly your leadership, your experience, and your season really shows in guiding the county through these last couple of years, both through the tornado and the experiences we went through then and in the COVID experience. So thank you, and we're glad to have you back. Paul, you're doing a fantastic job on our roads and bridges. I think we've got I could be biased, but I think we've got the best county engineer in the state, and congratulations on your reelection. We're all glad to have you back as part of our team, and I think the public recognizes the work that you've been doing, you and the county engineers team. You definitely are making the infrastructure look a lot better, and it's very more modern, and it's more visual, so thank you for that work. Commissioners, I'd also like to thank my team as the end of the year, not just my administration, our administration, but the extended county employees or some forty two, forty three hundred county employees that have continued to work, as I've always said, throughout all of these things, during the tornado. In some cases, we became the front face of government. And during COVID, the work that our team has done has just been fantastic. So we are very blessed to have men and women that are dedicated to the county. And then finally, I'd like to to basically wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. God bless all the families out there. We know everyone has been touched by something, but at the end of the day, our resilience will get us past this, and as we go into these next couple of years, we will we will prevail through this all. So thank you and God bless.
Yeah, thanks. Well, thanks, everybody. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, but I agree with what Debbie and Carolyn and Paul and Michael have said, and it's been a tough, no question about it, tough couple of years, but we're gonna we're gonna rebound, no question about it. And you know, Paul, you had such a tough campaign this year.
You always remind me of that.
I know. It's nice to have that, trust me, trust me. But anyway, and Commissioner Lieberman, I could not have done this campaign without you. You know, it was so different this time, so different, but we got through it, so I'm just glad it's over and behind us. There's no question about it.
Looking forward to the next four years.
Yep, exactly. And it's going to be a good, good coming up year. I just have a good feeling about it, and I want to wish everybody a a wonderful holiday. I don't have my mask like I usually have. It's behind me here, but please, for heaven's sakes, wear your mask, everybody, and please, you know, watch what you're doing over the holidays because this is this is when it can get worse, and we do not want to have a another spike like we've had here the past couple of weeks. So please, everybody, please be careful. But again, have a wonderful holiday, Christmas, as well as New Years, and guess what? We're not going to be meeting for the next two weeks for the holidays. Our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, January the twelfth. So again, everybody, have a wonderful holiday. Thank you. Thank you all.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Best. Thank you.
Thank you.